I don't know. If I don't know.
I have had that happen.
No, just that one that's under the shirt. The vendor was CCMH, but it said trailer repair.
It's Department five, so it's at the beginning. It's within the first five.
I remember the, I remember the CCMH. I just assumed it was, I never looked at the description.
I imagine it maybe just got worded wrong in the description.
I assumed. Cause I remember. I remembered saying. Prisoner appointment. That trailer repair was three hundred and forty.
Same vendor though?
This Crawford County. And the vendor number is zero six nine five two. Under a prisoner appointment and a trailer.
How was ransom?
It was good. It was cold. It was good. Not as cold as here. It was good.
I seen they had all any warn warnings for Florida.
Terry, you went to ransom?
Yes.
When did you do that?
Yep, I left Tuesday. We left Tuesday afternoon. I'd have left sooner, but.
Hey.
It wasn't you. I wasn't, no. It was just life in general.
Did you go to a show?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did. Hughes Brothers. No, not Hughes Brothers. Hey, Good. Oh, yeah. And we went to the site and sound. Miracle.
I pictured you guys all headed to the National FPA Convention. You guys are a bunch of bad.
Tell by our fearless leader. They bring animals down the. Can you imagine us as high school kids trying to tackle that guy?
Yeah.
What's wrong?
I think I.
This morning too. Look at us go. She thinks that when she was typing them in, it didn't carry.
The report. Okay.
And so, cause there's, like you said, there's the one over here on the next page. It's for trailer repair.
Right.
She just thinks that there was some.
I was crawling up the windmill yesterday dragging my Christmas star up and Kempson called.
At least you had a good outlet.
You're gonna do that call, but you're talking about video.
Give me a minute or two so I get that off.
I need both hands for this. Hold on.
Really could use two more.
That's fine.
I love it. Do you need an ambulance?
No answer. Send the ambulance or the hearse. Never looks that high from the ground. They get up there and look down like geez.
You don't look down.
Right.
That stuff never used to bother me at all.
I know.
When he's home, he's pretty occupied with his girlfriend.
When you're young though, you look down and think, how should I land if I fall? When you're old, you look down and you think, how many bones does that gonna cost?
Is that gonna put me in the nursing home?
I don't wanna be there. I'd get in trouble there, I'm sure.
Safety is our top driver. Tell us how we're doing.
Never wanna ask that question.
Especially after you come and fall through our right of way without.
Depending your guard for anything else.
It's really not much of anything. It's just an all question here, so. Call before you dig eight one one. Bless your utility.
Right. Then you have every intention, right?
To be fair, I probably wasn't them. It was their contractors. Well, let's get the party started, huh? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You got that report, Kelson? And then instead of having the elementary school. We could do the board supervisor. All right, we'll call a meeting to order. Everybody had a chance to review the amended agenda. Any conflicts of interest set on this agenda. Okay, here and that, we'll continue with the reading of the minutes.
November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, the board of supervisors met at nine AM with Cal Schultz chairman presiding. Members present were Hayden, Rossberg, Schultz, Scoob, and vote. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. A motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Rossberg to approve final plans and two point one six million estimated cost for HMA project. Number FM CO2 four, HMA four inch overlay of county road M fifty-five extending O Avenue North six point nine miles. Was the dollar amount, it was right, right? Estimated cost, okay. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by vote, seconded by Rossberg to approve the purchase Tiger mid-mount side rotary mower for thirty-seven thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars and eighty-eight cents, including mounting. From Tiger mowers. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by vote, seconded by Rossberg to approve the purchase of John Deere sixty-one fifty-five M mower tractor. For a hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents from Vanwall Equipment. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by vote, seconded by Scoob to approve Iowa DOT addendum. To agreement number twenty twenty-one TS zero one two. Changes project number on twenty twenty-one HMA project. Motion passed unanimously. A discussion was made with the board about property taxes for parcel zero three one nine one zero nine zero zero three. Review delinquent tax status. Duane Zink Crawford County Assessor needs to inspect the parcel to see if it qualifies for the tax abatement. No action was taken at this time. Motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Scoob to approve the appointment Zach Minor to the commission. To assess damages to fill a vacancy term ending December thirty-one twenty-two. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rossberg, seconded by Scoob to approve Associated Tower as lease negotiations consultant. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rossberg, seconded by Hayden to accept the bid for the courthouse restroom renovation from L and L Builders. For three hundred seventy-four thousand nine hundred dollars. Motion passed unanimously. Discussion was made with the board to review. An approval of construction compliance certificate for wind tower construction. No action was taken at this time during citizen input. There were citizens here to express their concerns about the construction of wind towers. The board canvassed the votes cast in the general election held on November eighth, twenty twenty-two. Copies of a canvas and abstracts are available in the auditor's office. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned at twelve forty-eight PM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Friday four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
So. Everything sounded good to me.
Are you the assistant?
Yeah.
I will start off with supervisors' reports. Mary?
See, I had my notes together here. I had my West Central Community Action meeting last Tuesday at six via Zoom. What I have here. Oh, they did a post-change on the policy council bylaws for the head start. And basically what that was, was just adding some verbiage to add public school partnerships. They've had a little bit of a change to their head start selection criteria. They've added some SNAP information. They were a little concerned that head start enrollment is down. Head start early head start, but that isn't unusual across the United States. It's about at seventy-two percent and Western poll is a little above that, but they said part of the issue is staffing. So that was part of the, of what we talked about, but they're, they're afraid that if they. Fall much lower, that they'll start losing right funding. They'll, they'll just eliminate those spots they're supposed to be filling. So they were concerned about that. Cook stove repair and replacement is now part of, it's an acceptable measure for the weatherization program. Keeping your house warm if your cook stove is.
What they always frowned upon.
Apparently not, because they're adding it to the weatherization program. They did have their review on their, let's say.
Not so bad of an idea of electric stove, but those are not gas stoves.
Whenever. When I think cook stove, I'm thinking, do they have stoves that they throw wood into?
Like a firewood, put my wood burn.
Like my grandma had?
Yeah.
An older stove.
There are people that still have those.
Potbelly stove.
Yeah.
They did some wage increases and you know what? I'd rather continue this report next week when I have my notes that I. Found them. I did, rather than wing it off there. Oh. Okay, first of all, they voted to increase all the staff wages by thirty cents per hour and that didn't include the management team. That was the, the. Thirty cents per hour, but an additional cola increase may be on the horizon also. The West Central Community Action Executive Director Wendy Mueller was given a six percent wage increase and they had proposed a ten percent wage increase. Because of her thirty years, they cited her thirty years of experience working with the agency plus seeing the agency through the flooding, the pandemic and the staffing issues. But they settled on the six. The increase will begin January first. Head start policy councils, they said, were changed to include public school partnerships in their community representative membership. Changes were made to the West Central Community Action Head Start Early Head Start State Selection Criteria, criteria eligibility for twenty-two, twenty-three, and that was that SNAP verbiage I mentioned. There are some head start and early head start enrollment issues nationwide. Enrollment is seventy-two percent. Much due to staffing issues, West Central was over the seventy-two percent enrollment level. They're pushed, they're doing a push for full enrollment. Make sure if the spots are not filled, they're going to be cut. Wendy and some of the staff went down to the CCDC and did the new fingerprinting down there and they said that was great. They said that they were, they were provided very, that they were very pleased with the service they were provided. Cook stove and replace and repair replacements are now acceptable measure for the weatherization program. The Iowa Department of Human Rights has completed their review for the program year twenty twenty-two and they are, we're finding no problems. And Wendy will be over here in the next, probably within the next month to visit with us about their funding for next year. There's no meeting December twenty-two for the board. And when you find out who's gonna replace me, please contact Brittany. And then we had our IT meeting yesterday at any time. Do you wanna fill in? We talked, he gave the reports for umbrella, tenable and synchro. And we talked a little bit about Office three sixty-five. There's a new server over public health that was purchased with some of that IT branch money. The Conservation Network director, he was going to start that in October, but he said due to. Election and some other stuff he had going, he thought he'd get to it this month, but he didn't. He'll get to it, he said, in December. And the public health phone system has been cut over. We discussed the know before training and we kind of. Talked about how many people were participating and should remedial training be done? He also was. For remedial, I don't think he really thought there was a lot of need for remedial training. And we kind of discussed the structure. If there was somebody he thought that needed remedial training, he would first go to the department, discuss it with them, because he said they're, you know, not really his employees too.
Right. I imagine he can see stuff that nobody else can see. If there's certain employees that are maybe logging on, clicking on the. Stuff that may be questionable.
You know, there's so much stuff in emails now that looks like it's something you should click on and you shouldn't have. You know, they're getting good at disguising this stuff.
The printer contact, contract with council, they've increased that by fourteen dollars and ninety-five cents per month. So I didn't know they had been assumed by another company, but apparently they have. So we discussed that a bit and what.
The nature of the beast and more just increase your fees and they'll get any more returns for.
Right, right. And it's the cost of business as they say. And we talked about the. Fiber ring or whatever the, that we split with others and he thinks we can get most bang for our buck maybe somewhere else. And talked a little bit about his security projects and we're going to meet on, I think we ended up the seventh of December, right, to talk about his budget for next year? That's kind of my take from it. So that's what I did this week.
The fiber ring, the one we share with DMU and the city of Denison.
Talked about some upgrades to it.
Increasing the bandwidth from thirty to one hundred.
Yeah, and that would be just us. They can actually control where on that ring that goes in, so.
For just over two thousand a year. I think is what it was.
I think, yeah, just over two thousand.
And then Jake can actually control in our system, like down at the. Maintenance shed down here in town, we don't need as much width, you know, thirty's ample for them, but up here in the courthouse. Over public health and places like that where more is required, we can send out, you know. I think that was how he worded it anyway.
Two thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars would be the difference to get a hundred as opposed to thirty.
More stuff that gets done.
So true.
Remember, post-industrial society, about everything's online now.
Yeah.
I had a gentleman call this morning and he wanted to know if we all received the letter from his sister Sandy. About the wind turbines.
Yeah.
We talked about that a little bit. And I received a picture from Jim Clark of the trailer fire in Aryan. Thank everybody that went out to that very, very, very cold weather to. Contain that.
It was sub-zero or freezing.
Zero Celsius.
It was a old wind.
Yeah.
I got your back.
I was just glad to see it was contained to that one building, the way the wind was blowing.
It was cold. That's what I've been up to this week.
All right. Hi, I've got it. Mine was in a real, real busy week. I got a few calls about the fire van. I know, I think that, I think if we, when we, if we would have to continue, I think we should go to where the chiefs. Can determine if somebody can burn. I mean, cause otherwise they've been out burning anyway and now, now they've been just doing the, some of them anyway. Some people have been doing the get forgiveness as opposed to permission thing. Now, I'm, I'm not saying that our big fires were that way, cause they were gonna happen whether we had the fire ban or not.
So true.
But you know, what, what, what I told a couple of the people that called, I said, well, I mean, you've always been responsible, you burn all the time, we get it, but. We're not putting the ban in place for the people that, that do it good. It's the ones that, you know, that will leave something embers floating through the night and the wind kicks up and there we hours of the morning and guess what? We got mess, but I think that.
Yeah, I got surprised when Owen County.
Lifted their. That's what created.
It showed yesterday. I could see it from my hill. Bag clothes. But I do think maybe it could. Of the crops are out.
Yeah.
Still, it needs to have something in place, but I think it could maybe.
Well, and if you just look like, I mean, when was the last time we had to evacuate one of our communities?
First time I ever remember.
I don't remember ever doing it. You know, and you hear about it out west and stuff all the time, but well, we're not typically used to it.
Unfortunately, even if it was an incidental deal, but like a town in Missouri that those people that lost their homes are going after the farmer who had a combine fire.
Yeah. And that's the way the world works.
Company's gonna try to find somebody else to pay for it.
Yeah.
You know, I could put them out of business and start buying twenty, thirty houses.
Yeah, no good. Anyway.
Well, I mean, I guess it's kind of our best interest to.
I don't, I, I'm fine with the, having a fire ban yet. I think it's dry enough out there, but I think that if you had something where the chief could go out and evaluate, all right, this is a small leaf fire. And if you, if you're monitoring it and you got all the precautions. You know, but I mean, a big timber pile to burn or something, you know, out there. All right, you gotta be out here with it until there's not an ember, you know.
Refresh my memory as hours on until further notice or just.
Yeah. That's the only thing. I mean, I get that the chiefs don't wanna have to be the bad guy in this, but I don't know. Do we got that many that wanna burn?
I haven't heard a lot.
I've only heard a few people that are complaining. So that's why I said, do we have a lot of people that are wanting to?
Here again, the responsible ones are probably like, oh, tree pilot going nowhere.
Yeah, and that's just it. Anyway, just a thought.
Or they'll take the precautions if we.
That's why I, I just, you know, if they have to check with the chief, at least they, you know. Maybe they'll be more cautious and maybe this has been enough where people will be cautious, cause otherwise they're, oh, they'll put us in a full burn ban and be careful. Which is kinda, I mean, I like to let people live and let live, but I don't, we also gotta be worried about community safety. Uh, we did the city walkthrough or the city center walkthrough. Very disappointing. I don't know if we don't advertise, you know, I mean, we put it in the paper, right? And.
Put it in three papers.
Three papers. And the one guy that showed up heard about it that morning.
We only have one person show up to look?
Very disappointing. And I mean, I don't know, you know, I mean, I don't think that it's something where we can call out and say, hey, unless we call everybody we know. That's got a construction.
Where would you stop?
Exactly.
Oh, there's Gene Hayden.
Yeah, Gene. Turn off your mute.
I've actually been here. Yeah, I've been listening. I dropped off, I went to the city hall and got a list of all of the, what do you call them? Certified contractors in Crawford County. That for the city of Denison. And so I'm thinking maybe we could kind of key in on some of those and send some letters to try to get some interest. I was really disappointed also that one person showed up and they just kind of found out about it that morning. So, did you get that list by chance, Terry? I dropped it off with the girls.
I have it.
You have it. I don't know, we could kind of go through there and, and, cause it would be a great project for a contractor over the winter months. I just can't, can't believe that there wouldn't be any interest. So.
You know, I don't suppose they, you know, really looked into that. We don't do that.
I know, I know. I just, I think we need to have at least three bids, so we have to make sure at least three people come up. I did make a call to one of them and they said they would be interested, but I kind of wanna have a fair even playing field that everybody knows. You can't pick and choose who you're gonna call. That's the other part of it. Cause then you'll hear, well, you didn't call me, you called them, so. But I just thought maybe if a few of them knew about it, they could start talking it up a little bit too and get some interest. It's a good project, you know. The guy that looked at it, I think seemed interested.
I think if we did a mail-in or a call, and now we'd have to do it as many as we could absolutely find.
We're gonna leave something and we're gonna be gigged on it. My only thing is that we went through the official notification process. It's not, or it's not this board be able to make pick winners or losers or, so. If we go back, we either start the whole process over or we go with what we have. Unfortunately, we only have one.
But did we do it with just one bid? I mean. How would we know?
When you put a date out, one bid's are gonna be open and you only have one bid show up. I mean, that's what you go with.
Okay. What's fair is fair.
I mean, that's just how I feel to keep. I mean, everybody has the same opportunity to read the paper, no matter how big or how small the print was in the paper. It's, it was there for everybody to see. We went through the same deal with the land auction a few years ago, how.
Yeah, yeah.
We auctioned a family farm off and then we had people coming here saying, well, I didn't see that in the paper.
Yeah, I. Okay, well, yeah, it was disappointing. Ty and I were.
It's unfortunate there's only one, but.
Yeah.
But we'll see if he even gets us a bid.
The word that will, will be back to.
Are we saying that we are gonna republish it though? Is that kind of the final opinion of everybody?
Probably have to wait and see if we get a bid submitted.
What was our, what was our drop dead date for the bid?
Nine eighth, December eighth, and then awarded on the thirteenth.
Yeah, so we'll have to wait until then for sure, Gene.
Well, let me ask you this. If somebody gets word of it, because word gets out and they wanna look at it, is it inappropriate to show it again to have another, or what's the thought of the board?
Did we advertise that as an exclusive date? Did we advertise that as an exclusive date? I mean, it's like when we did the towers, you had to be there.
Just asking, you know, cause somebody might get bored of it. And I don't know this guy that actually looked at it, you know, his reputation or anything, and that's the other part of it, you know?
Is scheduled November seventeenth, ten AM. All vendors planning to submit the proposal must have our representative on hand for this activity.
When I thought we had it working.
Okay, all right. Well, that is what that is, but it was disappointing. I will tell you, but he did show great interest. I thought he took, he took a a good interest in it, so. See what happens.
And I really don't have anything else. I mean, most other I mean, drove around, took pictures of the tower sites and I got, uh, I, he wanted pictures of all the electric boxes that are up. Mike did, so I got that all to him. Um, you know, the Charter Oak site. I was kinda looking that over, you know, they put dirt back on, we're gonna put a lot of rock there and we wanna put some of that padding down, mesh down that would.
It'll keep the rocks on top.
I mean, I was just looking that one over.
At least have access, he's always got some on hand or have access to something, or nowhere to get it, or maybe.
At least inside the perimeter of the fence, you know what I mean? I mean, we can spray the, the drive, but you know, round up the drive per se. Get something better rounded up on there. You know, we can do that, but I mean, as far as inside the fence goes, you know, you'd kinda like to have something where you don't have do a lot of yard maintenance per se. Let's see what it looks like once, you know, it gets closer to being done, I guess. I don't know how all that's gonna look, you know, we even have the I thought there would be concrete on top on that for some reason.
Oh, just pure pudding.
And that's always, that's always standing in the ground, above ground now is the pier. So.
There's a lot underground though.
And then I took pictures, I don't know if anybody wants to see them, I got some on my, I think it's on my phone or my tablet. I sent them back up to my they had all the equipment over at Vale, they got that big old machine that does the bore and for the pillars and then they had already had like the, the rebar casings and all that stuff at all the other sites too. The only thing we didn't have electricity yet, yet was on a Dallas city, but that's eight, that's Harrison County as opposed to R R E C or local. So, uh, but Greg was on that, was gonna get ahold of them and then he's gonna let us know when we're, get that up. So we're gaining, not as fast as I'd.
Yep, it's a process.
Yeah.
I think the cold weather might have slowed them down, just a skosh last week.
And I do like an excuse to go. I do like excuses to go drive on that new road down there.
Anything else?
No, that's all I really got, I think.
Gene, did you disappear again or not? Can't see you.
On purpose, yeah. But, uh, yeah, I had kind of the same emails as everybody else, a few phone calls about some things that we can discuss down the road a little bit. Got my mental health meeting today at two. Really, I've had a lot of conversations with Dawn this last week about how, how this is all gonna look going forward with this new budget. Clay's, uh, service that he provides over there in Vale is um, we really wanna try to get that to be a core service and so that's gonna be one of our goals. It's my understanding today on the agenda, Clay's gonna be there, we're gonna see what we can do to have that be a core service because we have a waiting list in that particular service and then no one's showing up in the Sioux City building, so, um, it'll be a long meeting, but I think it should come with some good, Dawn's been doing some good research and really had a lot of input on how this budget and, uh, the funds we're getting from the state are gonna look this next time, so. Stay tuned for next week after we have that mental health meeting, that will be a, a big update for you. But other than that, that was just kind of a routine week. Few phone calls about some roads, things like that, but, um, I'll just sit here and listen until it's my turn to talk again. How's that?
We'll hold you to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do my best.
Eric, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Did you have anything?
Yeah, I had a very interesting phone call, uh, from our gene there. Workforce development person up in Sioux City and the state's starting to shake the tree a little bit and they're denying our our application apparently for maintaining the program. I don't know more about it. I took her on a phone call last night and, and and talked to her for about twenty minutes to half an hour. We are having a mass exodus of new supervisors coming, coming on and even some of the other ones have traded out in their, in their, their own company, uh, their own so, you know, group. And so it's, it's just getting to be a little bit of a not working right and, and so I told her when I got back, I'd like to help out with it and we've gotta bring your region twelve back into it with Rick. He'll help us out, do that also, so. That, other than that, that's all I have for the week.
Yeah, thanks, Eric.
Yep.
Time, we have time filler today. That solid waste commission meeting last Tuesday, uh, highlights there was the hiring of Ron Dryers, our part-time scale operator. And we are currently seeking applications for another part-time person to work in the outside to help fill the needs and shortcomings there. The J C B, remember we talked about, that was gonna be like forty thousand dollars at time, put a new motor in it. Well, they, they stood behind the motor and it cost us sixty-six hundred dollars. So, fluid, so.
Good.
I thought that was pretty honest to them to stand behind their equipment, which I think they have more to lose as if they weren't gonna stand behind it and are how we, well, we get along with Caterpillar, I wouldn't, I would have scouted them out for the next purchase, so. But then our, one of our pickups, the motor blew up in that, so.
The good news is.
Yeah, the good, the bad news is, uh. Yeah, they said they would trade it, but the trade difference with the motor in it or with the motor repaired, it comes up to about the same seventy-seven hundred dollars, so. Yeah, so and then, you know, you know, if you can get a pickup, even if you use to go to get one today, so we're gonna have to put a new motor in that pickup so they can keep operating. It is a it's, it's, uh, two thousand fourteen, so. They don't have a lot of new stuff out here. I mean, their J C Bs, they kinda, kinda keep them within ten years, that's, I mean, otherwise they're, they run a pretty frugal ship. But, you know, sometimes the thought of doing businesses, you just have to update and repair stuff, so.
As opposed to trying to find a pickup, I know there are few barbecue and.
Yep. It's kinda but we probably have to do a budget amendment for out there. Because you know, payroll is, you know, the, the cost of hauling, the solid waste to Carol has gone up due to fuel costs. You know, and just the equipment, we didn't plan on all those repairs that, uh, so we're probably gonna do a budget amendment. Near term. Keep operating out there, but we got the cash and reserves to to do that amendment, we just need to have spending authority to do it, so. It'd be a spending authority type amendment. Kind of the highlights from that. Friday, went up to the Yes Center in Cherokee for a meeting as they are just pull up as usual, you know. Thirteen point three two kids per day on average. Thing is that they're, they're accounts receivable. They're running pretty flush, I mean almost two hundred thousand, but yeah. The, the count's receivable. Crawford County don't have that much new, but there's, I remember counties, there's some of them like Pocahontas County, forty-two thousand dollars, so. On the pool, you know, you're gonna be crit, incomes coming in. I don't know when it's ever gonna end it. Yeah, when I first went up there, it was like, the average was like five kids per day, oh, it's full. So we're doing, we're taking B I A kids just to keep the place operating, you know.
Are them all, are all them all member county kids?
Uh, there. There was, it.
I know.
They kicked non-constorium kids back to different places. So. Uh, you know, the Polk County, they, they'll bring kids up when they get a chance.
Polk County's got kids everywhere.
Yeah, that school shooting deal was saying to keep them kids segregated, so they're all over the state with that. I mean, we run the, uh, transportation up there and that's kind of staffing a problem there right now. Been hit last, last two months, but, you know, one, one of the kids, one of the employees was killed in a car accident, one thirty-six year old had like a massive heart attack, it's just common, some of the, couple of the older ones have had, come down with cancer and everything, and just, they're just, so staffing's struggling. The transportation, they actually had to turn some down because they couldn't find anybody to go get them, so. So they're hiring, trying to find trying to find drivers to do some transportation. I don't know if there's any prerequisites for that. I don't think so. I don't think you have to have any certification.
I don't think there's such a thing as a chauffeur, just I remember, you're calling up members from four years ago, but I don't think there's a chauffeur's.
Go out for the car.
I don't want. Transport, you needed a chauffeur's license.
Even like the high, uh, high risk kids, you know, they got, they got the partition in the car, but you're just, I think they advise you not to have conversation. I don't think getting.
No, I'd so, anybody's looking for a part-time job.
Yeah, I got.
Well, you know, it's to the point where I almost think you could almost call your hour out. Out of that hundred and ninety-six thousand, hundred and forty-two thousand. Uh, you know, they are, they are working through the process. Means the union didn't ratify or recertify up there, they're moving everything to the employee handbook, so.
Which, they don't have a union, no?
No, there was, there was one, like one paying member of the union up there, hard time, so. They, they failed to ratify. Yeah, just some correspondence in regards to wind turbines and, and pipelines.
I, and I went over and talked to, uh, Colin yesterday about the, we, we talked a little bit over. We can always redo it on there, but I, I suggested a one mile on the non-incor, unincorporated.
Yep.
And two mile on the incorporated.
We still need the, is he working on definition of the unincorporated?
That's what we'll have to do, yeah. And that's, you know, I, I would have to say a populated unincorporated, how's that?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I don't, does burn? Unincorporated or?
You got some housing, housing there, not a lot anymore.
They are unincorporated.
Right, but when you start defining them out, do you start putting a unincorporated area of twenty residents or more, or what do you do? I mean, because Els, Els is an unincorporated town in Crawford County and there's, well, they're getting a new house there now, but a new house is coming down, so it's gain of zero. So those are the things that happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No more unincorporated area, but yet it's no different than my house, so they get a special setback because they were once a community.
But we, but Duane did look it up and our unincorporated communities do have boundaries, so. I wouldn't know where the setback was from.
The town of Schultz, I guess.
Should I?
Chad Gossler always tells himself the mayor of Burn.
I think he is, so. I, but I guess Gene and I are meeting with, uh, Paul and the city of Dennison next Tuesday at one o'clock in regards to the Donna Reed Bridge.
I will be there.
And then Ty and I met with, uh, representatives of the city of Dennison. What day was that?
That's Wednesday.
Wednesday. The comm center, uh, there's some things working there, but.
Mostly talked about potential training, types of trainings for the comm center. That was our biggest discussion topic.
But.
You know, we just went, we, you've gotta come into the twenty-first century on how we respond with the communication system.
No, as a newsworthy, nothing, nothing, there's a lot of good discussion.
Gotta start with a plan, trying to formulate.
And that's what we're trying to develop.
Otherwise, I didn't have very busy as far as extra meetings.
Yes.
Everybody wants to hear about the driving around that I do. And I had, I've had one that sent me a couple of emails about gravel that's get a lot of washboards and I said, well, if I can throw the dirt at the board and hit them right now, do we get some rain, we're gonna have.
I had a gentleman explain it to me, he lives out in the country, says there's one, either gonna have a smooth road or a rough road. He says, you live on a gravel road. He says, it is what it is.
Yeah.
Just be happy you got road.
Yeah.
Well, that's a different way of putting it. You know, no moisture, you have to be smooth for like thirty seconds until the first car dies over. I mean, that's not some of it probably can be attributed to operator, but I imagine it probably be a miniscule contribution operator.
I think it's thinking about operators, if they, if they leave the get edge on there where you're starting to get a rut on the outside edge of the road or you don't have enough ground for too much ground.
I will say we've been maybe sacrificing our edge ruts for, to achieve crown maybe on some of these roads and.
No, I think it's been hard because it's been, the roads have been hard for the last couple, three years.
Unfortunately, yeah.
I don't know, do, do we ever have to worry about doing a study of overall the county water, water table? I mean, is there somebody that watches that? Does D N R watch that?
I know it's low.
Yeah.
One tile lines aren't running, you know, it's, uh, run for twenty years consecutively. Now the water table's down, rain.
Well, I know that our East Soldier River is like the babbling brook now. Well, I know that our East Soldier River is like the babbling brook now.
Why? The Mississippi River is about that bad.
That might be the correct, Mississippi correct.
Yeah, all that snow buff we got will go to the Great Lakes and up to Atlantic Ocean, so that probably won't help much.
Well, it was in the Great Lakes anyway.
Came out of the Great Lakes.
That was crazy.
Imagine that.
Cannot imagine at all.
Especially when you're not, you know, in January and February, you're kind of ready and.
We might have to close the courthouse.
I'm gonna show up just because I want.
Nami. I mean, Snug is a bug in a racket.
Well, what else is there?
You're doing a good job filling time, I'll say. I didn't know if we'd have enough till two people gone, I didn't think we'd make it past nine thirty.
That was one, he was one, he was in that picture too, that was on Facebook the other day. Young Tim Bowman getting ready to go to the national event convention.
A young Tim Bowman.
Use those art like Deber. Cool. Was there Augustus in there, dude? Proof that we were young.
So you're saying we're better now?
I didn't say that. Come on now.
We're waiting on you.
I got some more.
Happy Thanksgiving. To everyone. I even got a special edition to be handed for you.
You use color.
I splurged. Splurged today. For you, that is that. From a fiscal conservative, that was a hard to push the button. And you know, not a lot here today. Uh, got this permit, this new house to one of up there on two hundred and sixty street, kind of back in the woods, so we need water for it, so. Uh, that's what that one is. Roll water to it. Pardon? Pipe and whirl water to it. Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, remember, so right up there off of thirty nine by a half mile or so, kind of neat little location up there. Um, to that, the uh, bridge over on H Avenue, they're getting close this week, but. Uh, the weather's cooperating, so hopefully we'll get that wrapped up. Record button, sure, like just. Yeah, getting close. Getting close, yes, it is getting close. Uh, great crew, they'll probably finish P Avenue up today or tomorrow, and then we'll kind of. Regroup and maybe work on clearing those trees down at the dome, um, bridge crew, uh, just kind of cleaning up some odd, odds and in. Bridge repair stuff that we have and. The other items there, the. Bridge over the Pacific Railroad. So I've got a meeting set up, I kind of work with Kyle. Uh, I think it'd be good to have two board members, a couple of councilmen, city manager, myself, all get together. You know, I I, you know, develop some sort of a plan of. How we're gonna move forward with the replacement of that bridge, so the city received a million and a half dollars to city, state city bridge funding. So there's allocated a little different, the cities mean, okay, than the counties counting, we have a formula based cities. It depends on, you know, there's a criteria that. They apply volume of traffic, length of detour, condition of the bridge and a number of things that determine which bridges start to kind of move up. And two things have happened is that they've got a lot of their bad ones taken care of, really bad ones, and they've gotten more money, so. They applied for this one and got funded right away, so. Which is a good thing, but still gonna be short of what we need to do the, you know, the total package, so. So we get together and kind of talk about how we're gonna move forward with that. If you want to visit ahead of time. Certainly be happy to do that, so. Um, and then uh, they'd be good to schedule a trip to Manila sometime after a board meeting. Down and take a look at that shop. Get eyes on it, so as we put numbers into a budget, everybody's kind of familiar with what, what we're starting with and what we're proposing to do, so. Next week, we've got the the city meeting after the board meeting, and so. Um, I'm open for suggestions, there's no big rush, but uh, I just think it'd be good to go down there. Yeah, take a look.
For the budget.
Yeah. And when we do that, we'll take a, we'll drive through our shop down here too. Figure out. So, and then the Sleswick Yard, the approach, actually I'm gonna meet after lunch here. Pretty much gonna move forward with that, you know, thirty five thousand dollars for the year. We may only be there a couple of months and it generally works out pretty well for us if we can work with contractors on that, so. I'll be meeting with him later this morning, but if there's any concern, I know I've talked to a couple of you about it already. Seems like a good opportunity for us to work with the contractor. It always seemed like they leave some goodies behind, do. They always do, yeah.
Is there, is there any liability there?
Um, yeah, you get somebody on your property, there certainly is, but you know, we, we've got a lease agreement that we've put together and we, you know, have a sign off on. You know, Jerry, there's, you know, it's like contamination, they're responsible for cleaning up any spills or anything like that. You know, you, you have a document, you have a lease agreement spells out all that stuff, but at the end of the day, if something happens. It's like anything else, they're gonna come after everybody, but I guess. Everybody's listed on. Yeah, I kind of move forward, you know, you know. The theory that I hope, you know, you hope nothing's gonna happen, so.
Reparable company.
Yeah, so. Yeah. It's happening every year all over here, so. Hmm. So anyhow, uh, that and then the uh, Kansas meetings next week. So, um, that's all I have. What do you have that meeting in? That'll be in Harlem. They move, they move around. Yeah, normally I have all kinds of things to talk about and we can sit in this if you want.
Well, through our, uh, just some calls about roads and stuff that we're developing head druts or, you know, we're maybe working on the crown on. Some roads and cutting shoulders, you know, at the cost of putting crown in the road.
Yeah.
Lips along.
Yeah, they've been working on that. Yeah.
I was up.
This is pretty aggressive.
I was up in Gene's territory yesterday, and he was pulling grass in, which is.
Yeah.
So I mean, those are just things that we're hearing about that, uh. You know, you to achieve crowd, you gotta do something.
Yeah.
So do they.
So I guess what is it that they're saying, Kyle?
That they're leaving lips along the edge. Either.
Okay.
What, what I see a lot is it just gets kicked off into the ditch then.
Yeah.
Take that edge and just throw it in the ditch instead of pulling it in.
Yeah. Any, any areas in particular that you're hearing that, because I mean.
It's around the charter road area.
Just around charter, okay.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
You got one new main, new, one new guy, and then you got Gene up there that knows what Gene does, so.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not at all about giving it time and just letting it go, but those were, those are the calls I have.
Okay, uh, yeah, and we'll, we, you know, we continue to work on that, we're having uh, January eleventh. Um, I'm having a. Having, uh, you know, we got two new machines, Ziggler come down with their. Customer service reps and all of their people and, and talk about the machines and. Kind of have a little motor grader work, uh, operator workshop. And then. There's a gentleman from Nebraska that does train. And so I've talked to him, we're gonna have him come in next year in June. Uh, to do, it's like a two day program where they bring all the blade operators and bring their machines, so we'll have all of our machines. Uh, you know, at a, at a location somewhere here in the county where we'll just practice working on a road and talk about different things. Um, you know, it's a, it's a constant challenge getting people to, you know, operators to get out there and. Pull those edges in and they continue to try to work on it, but that's, those are some of the things that we're doing.
Well, they're all the new, the majority of, oh, let's see, newer motor grader operators, I mean, we've lost a lot of. Lot of years of experience to retirement in the past couple of years, you know, you take Buck that had fifty years experience, you know, it's gone.
Yeah.
To where, you know, he knew what every lever thing could do on that machine to where some of these new guys maybe don't.
Yeah.
Quite know that, so to have that opportunity of somebody to say, you know, you can slide your blade this way or tilt it that way, you know, I think that that'd be good for them.
Yeah, and there'll be a new machine going to charter up, so. So it's going there, wants to go to downtown city, so. So we'll continue to work on that.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, I think, good deal.
Yeah, the roads are rough in a lot of areas, it's, you know, there's just. Very stop me and said he'd come help train your guys. Who did? Very, very, yeah. Yeah, well, we've had Barry up there, he's come in, and so, uh. Train your new guys, you know. Hmm, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think you said he was actually overworking Craig. Yeah.
He did there for a while.
Yeah, yeah, and there initially, and so, you know, unless I get feedback, I'm not out there on all the roads, I, you know, so it's okay, you know, they get some feedback and. And we'll uh, continue to try to, try to work on it, so.
Well, it's a process.
It is, yeah.
New person that's never been around that or in one, you know, you don't learn that in a matter of a week or so.
Yeah, you have to have the uh. Confidence to try new things out there and the, the machines have a tremendous amount of potential.
Yeah, and then throw a blizzard in.
Every season brings something new.
It does.
That's what I'm concerned about that, and I know Buck, he's gotta push still back for better than I'm wanting, he's had to be one of the best.
Yeah, yeah, they, you did a good job up there.
My road has a tendency to get drifted shut, so.
Really?
East of my house.
Yeah. When I find them coming. I gotta find them. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's what we're.
I was gonna say, Ty, you weren't asking something.
Fabric around.
Oh, yeah.
These uh, towers, you think we should lay that now and before we put rock down or not?
Up around the buildings. Help keep weeds from growing up. Yeah, yeah, it probably would do that. At least inside the, the compound. Yeah, I mean, you could do it inside the compound, yeah. I'm not worried about the road. Yeah, you're just trying to keep vegetation from coming through, okay. Yeah, yeah. Keep it cleaned up. Yeah, that's not a bad idea, so. It stands a little cost initially, but if you don't put it down, then you do have weeds and stuff coming up through, I thought you were maybe thinking about, you know, this, the stability you're adding, you know, and you could do that, it's just. Inside the fenced area, I'd say it's probably not a bad idea. Hmm, that's what we were, that's what I was thinking, you know, just, and maybe around the, just the very outside edge. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Are they working on? Oh, yeah, yeah, they got the pilings put in charter road. Okay.
I call the concrete, no, charter road, I think.
Yeah. Good. Well, yeah, the float, uh, for the structure and everything, you know, there's a shelter. They did good weather. And then for the, yeah. I didn't go, I haven't been over this, you know, weekend, I didn't get over the veil, but end of the week, they had all the. All the equipment that they bore and all that. Good, good. We're still waiting for electricity now in downtown city, but that's Harrison County, so, but Greg was gonna harass him until we got it. Yeah. All the other three have electricity and.
Good.
So we're rocking, they did, oh, they did some bore on the one side there, looked like they bored underneath the road, our charter road, probably.
Are they having trouble getting Harrison County there?
I don't, I don't, I, I think it's just kind of behind the curve because it was this different county, you know. Okay, I will, I'll take them differently, Greg. Yeah.
Pay your bill.
They're usually pretty, pretty good. They, Stevens. Retired. So. Yeah, if you hear anything, you know, kind of, so, you know, we don't, we don't get too many down there.
Um, yeah, I was, you know, I was, he was really pulling his shoulders, I was impressed, there, I was on G Avenue. You know, and it, it was all in the middle, so he wasn't done with it for the day yet.
That's Gene, yeah, 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 Gene. He gets after it, you know, and, and so, yeah.
There's only one way to get rid of the lip on the edge, well, there's two ways.
That's right.
You gotta go somewhere.
The best thing is not to let it get that way.
Correct.
Okay, and that's, you know, where you just skim it instead of, you know, gouging and have a straight blade instead of the curved blade. You know, so it's, there's a lot of things that they just need to continue to work on.
Yeah, and I do think that some of them, the one that grass gets tall in the summer, that it's almost impossible to, to take, scale, but. In the spring is probably the best time to get after it when the ground's soft.
It is. Or fall after they've been mowed and, and so they, they, they've all, you know, the mowers are sitting there, I always tell them, I said, if you want to, go mow two or three miles. Yeah, the mower, go mow it. Then go work. Back with your blade. Come back with your blade.
Yeah.
You know, so that, that's always. On your worst roads, that's probably an easy thing to do. It is, yeah, in July or August, because we're not mowing them until after Labor Day, but I said, go get the mower, you know, I told that, the number of them, so.
No.
Just keep trying.
Yeah. Everybody's trying, you know.
So.
Without rain, you don't get head threat, so.
Yeah, but if you have an edge rut and it rains.
You gotta remember them days too.
Oh, yeah, twenty nineteen, or too long ago. You know, because every edge rut there was, I mean. Bad, yeah, so. Okay, well, you guys.
Thanks, Paul, happy Thanksgiving.
You bet. Yeah. Eating lots of turkey.
My mother-in-law, she called the other night.
Supports us here in Crawford County. Enter.
We're sulking two turkeys, she called, she said, you got room for a pork loin too? I says, you think we need it? She's, well, I got two turkeys I'm cooking and you got two turkeys? I said, I don't think we need pork. Four turkeys probably be enough. She never, she don't ever want to run short of food, so.
I don't think you're gonna.
We end up all taking a bunch of leftovers home.
That's right, bring your Tupperware.
Four turkeys was.
Wow, is that.
Uh, well, I got smoked like twenty two pounder.
One turkey or two, two eleven pounders, one twenty two pound turkey?
Yeah, that's huge.
What was Jake saying about the? Security on, on, as far as they're going after supervisors' families to get us compromised? Have you heard about that?
What did you call it? He said, when he was at conference, they talked about a grief ransom gang that's targeting family and friends and trying them to leverage. When systems are compromised. Trying to leverage them in order to get the ransom paid with. High profile individuals, like people that would be like on the board of supervisors. But he said the average ransom amount, how much do you think it is? Three hundred thousand dollars. It's a lot of money.
I am just gonna turn. Let China start to interfere in our budget operations.
Yeah, he did. Just await my account, call me.
Right, that's kind of what I thought too, but just to, well, that was the other thing, he said it was a dual thing, they're trying to get ransom out of the people who they've. Taken their stuff, and then they turn around, they sell it on the dark web and get the money there too.
Yeah. I think we should go ahead and lift the burner ban on this dark web.
Yeah, he also mentioned the assessor's office replacing their secondary roof also.
Yeah, that's what he said. Yeah. Assesse ability to take care of.
Oh, we're, speaking of that, we got a meeting with them next Tuesday at thirty five or five thirty.
Yeah.
Oh, already?
Talking about budget stuff.
There be square.
Yeah, you might want to attend that. You get your invite. Welcome, welcome. Come in.
I think it's a conference room.
Yeah, can be helpful if somebody was there. To have one of you guys there for that.
Uh, school board.
Yeah, exactly.
No, last night, school board meeting, our representative from charter ropes. Should I go to my daughter's basketball game or go to the conference board? And I said, I know where I would go. I don't think there's enough for action items on this agenda. Just to warm up.
Interesting.
We'll see.
No, I get a, I get a letter in mail.
District three meeting next week in Storm Lake. Next summer, Carbon is having a host of a deal with Galva.
Yeah, they are.
Wednesday also.
That's next Wednesday. Yeah, so that.
Yeah, I was on the way to Storm Lake.
But the one at Storm Lake starts at ten, right, and and the summit is at eleven at Galva.
Probably try to attend.
Try to carload or.
We can.
I've planned to go, so, yep, oh, I'm going, so if anybody, I'll hitchhike. You guys, you guys don't want me driving, I promise. I don't want to ask for any gas money, how's that? Kyle, you can't wear your hat, you won't fit. Just saying.
Maybe I, we definitely could.
There was thinking maybe if we did a split, that maybe I'd run up to the Galva thing.
Here I am.
You mess it, when she came back in the county?
No, I had to call them.
You didn't, you didn't escort her back in?
I know, way to go, Jim.
Who would have been escorting you home on your birthday, right?
Dreamers, balloons, cake.
Old bit.
So next week, on the agenda of Burn Man. I imagine, probably some friends.
It's equipment operator, right? What's that mean?
Ron Bearden's house, there's always something sitting around. If you're looking for friends benefits, there might be something show up on occasion that don't need to go to the land bill. JCBs, the loaders.
What's that? One of those same things with the big bucket thing on there?
You run into concrete with it all day, get the bucket full, so it can't really go out.
Hey, you don't have to do it by hand.
Might be driving a pickup going through the, all the whatever spots.
I thought the towns had to bring those up there. I thought like Down City, the Down City guys had it, the city guys had to bring.
That might be Down City recycling there.
No, not for that one, we.
It's one of the blue ones.
When you're doing, working on that turbine stuff. Can you figure out a way to define? That's unincorporated, like what would be a good thing on how many populations is? If there isn't a lot of people living there, I'd kind of, you know, there's some of these old. Unincorporated towns that are still listed on flat maps that don't even have anywhere to live in there, I don't really want to think we want to include. Yeah, that's what I mean, is there, is there something that we need to sit down with you and talk about on that?
We can define. Unincorporated towns of a certain population.
Yeah, well, that's kind of.
And then, and then from there have.
I mean, you want, I mean, what's a safe thing, say a five for for a ten person community or? I've never, and all the stuff I looked at, I don't remember ever seeing anything about. But it did, Kyle brought it up too, and it seems like a logical thing. Logical point. Twenty, twenty people, ten people, five people. I I used a paper towel to spit. You never saw. I won't notice, I have that around me a lot. Oh, Gene's grandson was, seen where he posted, he was going up there for college. I had a cousin from down in Texas, it was on a state champion team, he was their middle linebacker.
He goes everywhere for college visits. That's kind of their, yeah. I don't take any of them too serious. Well, I think that's, I think it's making that to the top of the list.
Sounds like Gene singing.
I think Clayton will need a singer for his wedding.
Mark Madonna.
Can we lift it, but you'd have some. Do you need these? Why don't you sign it? Yeah.
They're on the list.
Thank you.
Ten fifteen. Okay, Haley. Come on down. Welcome back.
Thank you, it's good to be back. Have you guys gotten a chance to read these? You may have had them emailed to you. If not, I can hand them out, so I can look at them together.
Guess we'll take. All that works.
There you go, very much. You're welcome.
Please, thank you.
Anybody else? Alrighty. Yes, I have two extras.
Mister Dozer. Interested in wanting to, their new supervisor. Do we have enough?
Okay, so I'll just kind of start by reintroducing myself, since last time I was here was in August, so, um, my name, do what?
Don't seem like it.
I know. Doesn't seem like it's been that long. So my name is Haley Langrell, I work for Turnkey Logistics, representing Summit Carbon Solutions, we primarily do the non-environmental permitting. So road crossing, stuff like that. Uh, that's kind of where Riley comes in, I'm sure you guys remember him, so he is the primary contact. In this county for road crossing permits, driveway permits, stuff like that, uh, so he's working with Paul. Uh, and then I also have Kylie Kritz with us today, and she is one of our project managers in Iowa. So if you guys have any questions, she's here to help us out today and answering those. So last time I was here, I kind of talked about. Uh, why Summit Carbon Solutions is pursuing the project, we went over the tax numbers, I gave you guys just an update. So today, we're gonna do something kind of similar, I'm just gonna go through a a brief update, and then we'll kind of focus on this. Frequently asked questions page, so just to kind of just give some background on this. Uh, my team at this point has gone to almost all of the project counties to board meetings and given, you know, presentations and then answered questions. So we kind of compiled the most frequently asked questions we got, put them on this page here, and we can kind of go through that. Um, so just starting with an update. Um, we do still expect construction to start in late summer of twenty twenty three, so August, September range. Um, as far as land acquisition in this county, as of last Thursday, uh, the seventeenth, we were at almost eighty percent. I do believe we have crossed that threshold into the eighty percent range, um, as of today, um, and that's for Crawford County. Um, statewide, we were at around fifty seven percent. Um, and that is as of last Thursday as well, and we've also hit our fifty percent, uh, mark for project wide. Um, so we're really exceeding our goals, um, especially in this counting with eighty percent, that's great, uh, we still have a lot of time to work with, so. Uh, we're happy with that. And then as far as permitting, um, I know that we got the package for the crossings ready, uh, yesterday afternoon. And Riley had spoken with Paul this morning, so he's gonna get those printed and, uh, get them over to Paul Monday, I believe. So he'll be able to look at the, uh, crossing permit applications. Um, that's really all I have for an update. So we'll kind of move towards this frequently asked questions page, so I remember last time I was here, we talked about a lot of things. Um, but I know safety is a big concern, and then also, um, how we're gonna treat people's land and the things that we're doing. So just want to touch on the safety, and some of this stuff, we may have, like I said, we talked a lot about a lot of things last time, so. I may have gone over it, and you can just stop me if I'm, if I'm repeating, um, but. So Summit Carbon Solutions, we are federally regulated by FENSA, so FENSA requires us to X-ray ten percent of the wells on this. Uh, project line, Summit Carbon Solutions has, uh, gone the extra mile and committed to X-raying one hundred percent of the wells. Second, uh, the pipeline will be hydrostatically tested, so we're gonna fill it up with water a hundred and twenty five percent or more of the max operating pressure. And this will be done, uh, for hours, I think like four to eight hours, depending on, uh, the pipe size, where the pipe will be located, that kind of thing, before it ever goes into the ground. Then we have the block valves, we kind of went over this last time as well, but I'll just show you again. Um, on the map, the block valves would be the little red ribbons you see on here, so we're required to have them, uh. No more than twenty miles apart, um, a lot of places, uh, along the project line, you'll see. Where they're even closer than that, like you can see it here, because there's a railroad in a highly populated area, large waterways, we would have to have. Them closer together, uh, than twenty miles, but. That is the standard with some exceptions, so, and the way these valves would work is they would automatically shut, if there's any kind of temperature. Uh, pressure change, they would automatically shut between, uh, on either side of that area. So I think last time, uh, there was a question on how they would sense these, uh, temperature or pressure change. Changes, and I know we asked about that, and that is done through cellular, um, and we can kind of get into that a little bit more later, if if you guys want. So along with the block valves, the pipeline's gonna be monitored twenty four seven, um. At the Ames office, so if something happens, the block valve's shut, we will also be able to access those from the Ames office. Along with that, we're gonna have people living and working locally across the line, we're required to have, uh, people so many miles across the line to. Do regular maintenance or respond to any kind of, uh, issue. And then I know last time we also talked about Rod Dylan, uh, he's our director of regulatory compliance, so. So he's reaching, reaching out to the emergency managers in each county, so there's gonna be trainings, um, with the emergency response in the counties, uh, so, and they will train with our local staff. So if something were to happen, um, it's not gonna be the first time these people are meeting each other, as in a moment of a disaster, they will be prepared, um, and know what to expect and what to do in that, uh, moment, so, um, and just to touch on a little bit more of the safety, I know Ty, we saw you at the core program, uh, gosh, I don't even know, remember, or remember when that was, I think a couple months ago, um, that's something that we're gonna be joining, uh, once we're in service, we're attending those meetings right now, and that's kind of just where emergency response and pipeline companies work together.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, um, that's something we plan on doing, along with a lot of other things.
He's a good instructor.
Yes.
Very good job.
Yeah. Yep. So that's just kind of touching on the safety, um, if you guys have anything else you wanna, uh, go over, um, I think liability came up last time, I did put in some specific language from our, uh, draft easement that touches on liability and how Summit Carbon Solutions would be liable, um, in every case except for, you know, gross negligence, so.
You talked about hydrostatic testing, though. You're gonna start that, you'll do that prior to installing a pipe into the ground, is there, you know, DOT regulates like SCBA cylinders through fire departments, and they have to be done depending on what the makeup of the, the cylinder is, you know, either annually or biannually or every five years, is this something that they would do in five years, is hydro tested again, or, or is there a way of kind of them annually or semi biannually or something, the pipeline itself?
So I know, and Kylie, you can probably speak a little bit more on this, I know that you run the, um, the PIG.
The PIG.
It's what it's called. Uh, is there anything else?
Yeah, that, I, in, inline inspection, that takes place every five years.
Okay.
Uh, but we'll also have throughout the line, we'll have the, uh, cathodic protection, which has test stations, which we can test to verify whether cathodic protection is still on and functioning, and we'll be able to do those regular periodic tests, um, as well as, uh, monthly checks on anything that's above ground, so the valves and things like that. But the inline inspection, uh, where it's in the little hydrotest, when it's wearing service, um, is actually more sophisticated than a hydrotest, so.
Sure. You spurred my thought on that.
I, I'd like to ask you a little bit more about the valves, because they're above ground. What, what do we've got that's monitoring them on a constant basis? Since they're above ground, obviously, there's been some more concern about that, and I'm sure I'm asking on Jean's behalf here too, because she had some concern about the valve being above ground. Um, what, 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 what's in place to, basically, since it's above ground, you know, and exposed, is there, you know, do you have snippers in the structures, is it in a structure itself? I would assume the pipes inside, is it exposed, like you see natural gas pipelines, or how, how, what, what will that valve look like, and should I be asking her, or?
Um, yeah, Kylie can probably speak to it more than me, I know that it will be a fenced off area, but, um,
it will be fenced in, um, but it's close similar to, yeah, what you see on a natural gas, um, pretty similar to that overall. So we'll have a pressure, um, and temperature indicators, um, that sit, both you can see them there, and they'll read out at our, um, operations center in Ames. Um, and that'll be the tester. We have required limits where we'll have staff based, so if for any reason, you know, we lose a couple tons of pressure, we need someone to go in and check on it, um, we'll have that person within, I think forty-five minute range is the time, uh, to go and check on it. So it's the indicators, uh, transmitters, I think, like, um, that will alert us.
And just, and I, and I think most people's concern is because there's more mechanical components at a valve. You know, is there any seeping around it, or I mean, would there be something that indicate to you guys, I mean, do you go out there frequently and test air around the?
Yep, we will be out there, uh, department transportation regulates at least every thirty days, um, we'll be out there, so we'll do periodic checks through operations, when they have to drive the line, anytime they, you know, go by, but also not, this is related, because obviously I work on natural gas by, in the past, worked on natural gas lines and things. We'll know if it's leaking, but with it being carbon dioxide and, and low frequency of small leak, it isn't going to cause any effect.
Yeah.
It, it's being released currently, uh, you know, at the ethanol plants.
Yeah.
Not that we're gonna allow that to happen, but in terms of risk level, a pinhole leak is incredibly low.
Just good to have them questions answered.
We, we will follow everything that department transportation requires on every pipeline.
Well, it looks to me like you're actually, like she brought up earlier, that you're stepping a little bit beyond what you're required, and we certainly appreciate that. You know, and we're trying to do the same thing on our end, to make sure that everybody's satisfied we're doing a weekend to make sure it's safe and, and effective for the county and not detrimental to the county, and just, and I'm glad to see that you guys are doing the same on your end.
Yeah. And this will be the first pipeline ever built with that twenty mile valve requirement. Uh, before, you know, be fifty, eighty, hundred miles between valves, uh, and then the bulk of it were more like fifteen miles apart than, than twenty, twenty's just the maximum, um, so it's a lot more valves than we've ever seen. We've done actually quite a bit.
See, when you say valve, I mean, is it a spin valve, gate valve, I mean, would it be a shell gate?
It's a block valve.
Block valve.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I guess it says that in paper and so.
Yes, yes, with an actuator.
Yeah.
Manual override, there, where you could manually close them all, so I'm sure, right?
Yeah, you wouldn't want to, but yeah.
Well, I mean, uh, power failures, a major power failures were, yeah, there's still have to be a redundancy in the system, I think you guys are obviously looking at redundancy.
This is Jean Hayden, and I unfortunately do not have that paper, uh, in my email or in front of me, but I, I, did I understand you to say that the that valves in Crawford County are gonna be less than twenty miles apart, is that what, what I heard?
There are two, uh, near Dennison, so. Yes, crossing the railroad there.
Okay, yeah, barely, I'll have to, uh, yeah, I can't believe I don't have that in the email, I was looking all over, and I don't have it unfortunately, but so is that unusual to have two valves so close to a highly populated area? Is that, or is that why you have more valves that close together? What's the reasoning behind that?
So, and again, Kylie can probably speak to this more than I can, but there are certain areas that are called high consequence areas, so.
Yes.
We would be, would be required to have more valves, uh, near that area, if that makes sense. I'm looking at the speaker like.
So are, are you saying we're at a higher risk? Is that, uh, is, is that supposed to make us feel better?
Well, it's just, uh, it's a regulation set forth, forth by FEMSA, so it's just, we have to do what we're required to do, which is put those valves near that area.
How many areas in Iowa do you have that situation where you have two valves close to a highly populated area?
Um, I'm not sure on that, I know a lot of the places we have the valves are near large waterways, um, but like I said, anywhere that we're, yes, and it's not, um, but anywhere that we're regulated to have them closer together is when we would have them closer together.
Well, I remember seeing earlier where there was a valve that was up on a map earlier, it was up on, on the Vernon Vosk. So.
That was gonna be a pumping station, now they've taken that away, I believe.
Oh, pumping station at the time, I believe.
I don't think we, did we have a pump station?
Yep, you had it on the map at one point in time.
Through hydraulic changes, we, it just moved location.
Okay. Okay.
I, I have a question, is this time for question answer real quick? I'm, uh, at a disadvantage, and I apologize, I'm out of town. Um, you mentioned that your construction's gonna start in twenty twenty-three, and you only have eighty percent of, uh, the county, can you start if you haven't, uh, taken the conditions of the eminent domain? Or how's that gonna work? You have, don't you have to have a hundred percent to start construction?
So, um, we are at eighty percent, like you said, and we've been doing acquisition not even for a full year yet, so I think, you know, we're in a pretty good spot. Um, and we, our goal is one hundred percent voluntary acquisition, whether we can start or not without the one hundred percent, that would be, um, up to the IUB if they grant us the permit, and then, you know, how things go from there. So we do not have the permit, uh, from the IUB yet, but that's something that will come with time.
And I just want to make sure, excuse me?
Our, we're creating the construction schedule to hit where we have had the most success in acquisition, because you know, we have, it's an eighteen month construction schedule, so we have a lot of time, um, to work where we've had success. Um, a lot of the counties won't be hit until twenty twenty-four for construction, um, especially with the winter. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're designing it thoughtfully, um, a lot while working with the IUB on the process.
But it's my understanding that eminent domain takes quite a bit of time, uh, so are, are you prepared for all of that? Are, are you understanding that there will be eminent domain concerns here in Crawford County? Because you're not gonna get a hundred percent in Crawford County. That's a pretty for sure, sure thing. I think there's some people online that'll tell you that.
How many of these pipelines are you putting throughout Iowa?
Um, our project, it's just one.
What, this, this particular pipeline?
Yes, yes. There's a couple other projects going on, but we're not related to them anyway. So they're in different locations and it's all.
And I'll add something I forgot to add earlier, um, I think I gave this one to you guys last time, the Iowa page, it just has a little bit more information. We do list out the specific FEMSA, um, codes, and then how we are going above and beyond them, a lot of it you've heard before, the three foot, we're going four foot, um, as a starting point, four foot's a starting point. Um, and then, you know, a couple other ways that we're, you know, going above and beyond that.
What do we, what do we have here? Is it six or eight inch pipe that would be going through Crawford?
Um, looks like you have in Crawford, it is twelve.
Will be a twelve inch.
That's what we have at this point, yes.
It's the max size of the way up to.
I think the drop line gets.
Yeah, twenty-four inch?
It gets, it starts pretty small down, this line starts near Shenandoah, um, down to Fremont and works its way up, and it gradually gets a little bit bigger as we
Kind of go.
Move up the line, so.
What's the thickness of that pipe? I mean.
Is it a lady or big floor?
Uh, I believe it depends on the size, so the thickness changes with the size, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't have a twelve inch memorized, I know it goes all the way up to point seven five inch on a twenty-four, on a twenty-four inch. So three quarters of an inch, um, down to about point two, point three wall, so we went relatively heavy wall, um, for engineering reasons, much heavier than government regulation.
And is it a cast iron? Pipe?
High carbon steel.
High carbons.
Probably X fifty-two, X seventy, depending on size, location, what we're born under.
Ty, you can, you can download from their website. The one that goes east west from Bryan County, Bryan County, Clay County, Tall Allo, Cassuth, Hancock, Siroborro, or, or is a twenty inch. And then, uh, Ida, Ida says proposed, proposed eight inch, but there's a, there's a map that you could download on their website.
And Ida's proposed eight?
That's what it says.
I, that's gotta be bigger than that by now, it wouldn't go to from twelve down to eight.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the exact size, I know, um, we have had a little bit of line change over the past little bit, um, as far as sizing goes, we've taken into account a little bit more, um, allowable low, I guess, um, drawn like on the best way to put it, our allowable capacity, like, we've been doing a little bit better on the business side, so we've up from, what, twelve million tons a year that we can push through to around eighteen million tons a year.
Those, those could have changed, but that's on their, that's on their website, you can download that.
Yeah. And this is something that wouldn't affect easements that have already been signed, uh, there's an allowable, um, space or pipe size that, that are in the easements that are already signed.
We're very in Plymouth, they're twelve inch, according to those.
We're very over sixteen.
Fifteen, so that's also, it's, it's been changed, but this is, this is one that you can download and kind of look where they're, where they're at, where they're planning on going.
Stars, we are, are ethanol plants.
Yeah, yeah, starts down, down.
Down Fremont, Shenandoah.
Yeah, green plains.
So you've been picking up capacity the whole way, I mean, more customer capacity.
We just basically made the decision to build to our highest capacity design, because, you know, we don't, we don't want to put, no one wants more pipe in the ground.
Yeah.
Um, so if we put the one in, and it has the capacity for us to capture additional storage, it's gonna work in a, for a longer period of time.
Very many get hands, I was trying to look, the, the natural gas or LP pipeline that goes through on H Avenue, what the, I know there's one valve in the county.
Yeah, there's one valve in, uh, we blanked it off, because I didn't hit the shut off.
Yeah, um, and the next one.
And then, and then the other one, I think that might be close to Manona County, and then another one close to either, either, uh, Westside or Carroll County. But I know, I know we had to shut off, oh, we did, right or wrong, we did. And that, one of that burst, we had a maintainer hit, hit one.
Eighty-nine or ninety?
Yeah, it's on my birthday, I don't know that.
Yeah. See, I, 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 as a supervisor, I'd be remiss to ask, yes, the, uh, pipe got bigger in Crawford County from the original numbers you talked, talked about, so what does that do to our taxes on your pipe?
It will likely increase track taxes, we didn't get the numbers read on, on, on the engineer team. We, we just got through the hydraulic designs, that's why I like the maps aren't even updated, I'm sure our PR team's killing us for that information. Um, so I'm not sure if they'll run the numbers, but it will increase taxes.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah.
Could I ask another quick question? Real, or, since our, uh, uh, valves are gonna be closer together, does that mean that we're defined, defined as a sensitive area? Is that the reason for that?
Um, it's not necessarily sensitive, it's high population.
That's what it says on the map here, you don't have Jean, it calls Dennis in a high populated area, and it's marked them off. We, you know, but it looks like every town is listed as a high populated area, but Dennis and probably due to the numbers is a little more.
So that in, in their term is a sensitive area, is that the the term that they use, sensitive?
I think it's just a figure, you know, like Greg said, a regu- federally regulated area, you know.
Okay. So that means there'll be two of those valves actually in Crawford County, correct? Just want to make sure.
But it doesn't look like there's a pump station at all anymore.
Correct.
So will there actually be staff located in Crawford County? Are you having employees that will be, their job is Crawford County exclusively, or are we sharing somebody with many other counties?
Yeah, from what I know, it will be, we're required to have them, uh, so many miles, every so many miles. So where they decide to live, I think is ultimately up to them in some sense, so there might be, it really just depends, once we get them hired, uh, they'll probably have a choice, some sort of a choice on where they live, but.
But when they can live with them.
They start in Ames and then kind of work backwards, but it's not, your employees aren't, uh, told where to live based on what you consider to be the most vulnerable areas, is that, understanding that correctly? But if we have two, if we have two valves, I would think somebody should live pretty close to us.
Uh, we'll have shops, um, that those, those locations have been terminated, and those will kind of be home base, um, and we'll have people that lives sporadically between those. Um, but we'll, so the main response time is, we obviously have to respond to every eight-one-one call. Um, and there's emergency eight-one-one calls that we have to respond to, um, so the guidelines will be based on following, um, those regulations.
So what is the response time? I don't think I have that in my notes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna mark it down, Miss Jean, see if we can get you some more notes on that.
Yep, like to kind of know what you guys consider a response time on a hazardous. Yep, like to kind of know what you guys consider a response time on hazardous material.
Event or, or just day to day operations, Jean, I guess for their.
Uh, in case of a, uh, but that we need response. If it's response time, if we have an incident, what do they consider the response time to an incident? Does that make sense?
If we have, Jean, this Greg, if, if we have an, if, if we have an incident in Dennis and area, Tri-County would be, would be paged out, which is Shelby Harrison and Crawford. And we have people that, and damn die can, and uh stop if need be. But uh we have technicians that are available, we have meters, we have uh all kinds of monitoring equipment of if we need to evacuate, we can evacuate, if we don't need to, we don't need to, as, as it's a um carbon dioxide as opposed to carbon monoxide or, or that we may not need to be doing evacuation, but the only reason I, I, I was looking at the map and it'd be a good idea to download that map and look at it, Jean. You can see like Sioux City, you can look at Sioux City, Plymouth County, and some of the other counties have, have uh some big cities that I'm sure they've got a, they've got to have two or three shut offs. It's just, it's a mandated thing by the, by the federal government and the, and who they have to talk to. And it's just one of them deals that they have to have at the, the line, the line that goes through Crawford County for, for the um for the propane or natural gas is, is in a rural area, so they don't have, and it was built many years ago, so they don't have the, the uh wherewithal and the shut offs that, that these people will have or require, they changed the rules and they, and they have more, more stringent, hopefully uh more stringent laws that they have to go by.
Alright.
That's what we would, that's what me as emergency manager would have to, have to uh, they'll have to provide me with the information, what they're transporting. And, and like she said, any, any eight one one calls, which would be, which would be a one call for a day. If it's close to their pipe, they're gonna, they, they have to have an inspector there to, to do it as well as mark their own territory.
Well, I'm sure as time goes on, we'll get these things more refined, I just uh can ask them the questions that come to the top of my mind, so.
And you're, you're asking good questions, absolutely asking good questions because, because there's public out there that don't, don't know what, what, what's out there, good or bad and, and uh
Yeah.
Like I said, pro or con, it doesn't matter to me, it's, it's whatever you guys decide, I will, I, as emergency management, we will, we will deal with, with what we're dealt.
I think uh this is all new to all of us, all the questions we ask, even if they seem uh not valuable at this time, the more information we have, the better we are at uh making sure this is a good project for us, so I appreciate your help, Greg.
Sure. If I could add to that, Jean, just my, my experience of farming or close or nearby a pipeline already that uh they, I don't know how they know it, but they know when you're within like a half mile with like a dozer before you even know you're there. It's very weird when they're on the tracks of your dozer and you're like, how close that pipeline are you? So I'm, I don't know how they monitor theirs, but they, they monitor that thing like there's somebody watching you twenty four seven. So I'm guessing that the same.
A lot of security.
You know, I, like I said, I, I, I could not figure out how they knew that day that I was even in the same.
When, when during, during the fire, but it was cloudy that day, there, there is a satellite that flies right over Crawford County every day. It's a European side satellite for the weather service, but there is one, they can, they can look right on it and see.
Kyle, big brother's watching you.
Well, apparently, yeah, just like I turned around and like, there they are.
Say no more.
Not even close to your pipeline, but I appreciate your concern.
That's crazy.
So. I was just trying to find it, Greg, I mean, then there's some new protocol due to pipeline emergencies that have just been passed down in regards to reporting and what job centers responsibility.
And they'll, I mean, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna come and do all fire departments, so they'll, they'll take care of, of get telling me the territory reports, the uh pipeline guys for, for the one you're talking about. Every year we have, you have a meeting either out at the boulders or someplace close that, that the firefighters go to and we do, we do mock scenes um. Okay, so if, if it blew up here, what would you, what would you do? How would you evacuate? Where would you evacuate? And they would guide us, they helped guide us through, I, I think you guys, I think some of the firemen that we had quite, like I said, we had quite a few out of boulders one year and we did a, we did some, some scenarios and it's, it's, it's a good thing. And then they send information on, on um, they'll send me a, a report as well as the fire departments, who to call, what to call, what to look for, how far to uh evacuate, I've got that thing on my phone uh tells, tells what the, what the health and safety issues are of it. But um, I mean, that's, that's what they're required to do, they have to do.
Andrew Paul just had his safety meeting also, he had somebody from, I believe, Whipco, somebody from uh Black House Energy.
Yeah.
They do, we do the. But he, the point of the story was to have the guys out in the graders or wherever throughout the county be looking for if there's something.
Exactly, that's what happened with, with that pipeline. It's just, it's just years and years and years and years of, of, of grading and just worked its way down. Now it's, it's encased in concrete, so, so that hopefully Lord will, and that won't happen again, but like I said, they have to, they have to tell E M A fire departments and you guys, what you're, what they're doing and what the, what, what's in that pipe. Anything changes, they have, they are federally regulated to let us know what they're putting, sending through that button.
Good morning.
Did you say these stations are they getting fenced in?
Yes.
Are they getting locked?
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
I would hope so, yes.
Some of this stuff I saw with the
Yeah, and ones, the northern naturals, they're all, they're all, and the ones, the shut offs. Cause some of them right on that.
That's dead.
Yeah, well, they're right on that, they're right on that, so, yeah, right next to.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, you'd mentioned that your I U B permit has not been approved yet. Uh, do you know what the holdup is on that or what's going on with your next meeting? Kind of what's going on there?
So there's a hearing, uh scheduling hearing on December thirteenth, I believe. Um, so we'll find out more then, but it's kind of, we're on the I U B's time, we don't really have a, we can't say, hey, make your decision this day, that it's up to them, so.
Is your exhibit H been approved or is it still incomplete?
Um, we thought, do you want to pick on it?
I guess we're not looking for approval of the exhibit H, we were, we were required to do the submission. Um, we have completed the submission, obviously, there's um couple minor changes we may submit, but nothing dramatic is going to change on that other than we pull back exhibit H's um weekly or biweekly. Um, but we won't be submitting new ones um. And it's just part of the process, we're, we're no way behind where we expected to be with I V. Um, we knew it, it could take, you know, a year to eighteen months in the process and we're, we're falling right into that. Um, obviously, we know more than separate for when they schedule our hearing.
Though December thirteenth is the next time of, but is that, is the, is exhibit uh H, is that actually considered incomplete at this time? Is that kind of what the holdup is?
Um, there is, no, I, I don't believe there is a holdup at this point. On December thirteenth, um they'll determine how much time they need to look through the data and schedule a hearing. Um, I don't, I don't believe it's related to exhibit H's at all, but I, you know, I'm not really on that side.
Okay.
Or we're, we want any hold at it right now.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dave.
Uh, with that reading process, if I, let's, let's say, uh, explain it to me. If I U B denies a permit, what's your next step? If I U B approves it? Do, explain that to me, does that mean that, then the people that do not voluntarily sign up means that you can use them in the domain? Is that correct?
Um, so, like she said, we've kind of scheduled our construction to start, you know, summer twenty twenty three, but we're going to go to the counties that we have uh the highest acquisition at first. So once the I U B accepts or denies our permit, we would essentially be free to start construction, I would assume.
Once they accept, accept the permit, we are free to start construction. It's not directly related um to an immediate process, other than that isn't, that is included in insurance.
And if they deny it?
I don't know, we won't start construction.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, the permits denied, I mean.
Definitely have some work.
Yeah. If the permits are denied, you can't tell us that you're still going to start construction. I didn't hear.
Correct.
I, I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage because I'm on a Zoom, but uh that's kind of the way I heard that. That's not correct, right?
I, I'm sorry, I said we won't start construction if, if it's denied.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I, I, I was hoping I heard that right, wrong.
What, what is your uh, I, I, I'm, I'm sure you're all pretty well aware of the fact that we're doing the soil, Evan Iowa State do soil analysis for us. Just, and our, our, our big concern there is obviously protecting the soils of Crawford County. I mean, it's not to get in your way of doing business, it's in our way of protecting business. And our farmers are our main priority, which in a sense is yours as well. Um, so I mean, we'll have uh our inspectors be able to monitor the soil conditions, I mean, are you guys apprised of that? And are you, what, what's your feeling? Or I mean, obviously you can't, well, maybe you're supposed to be speaking for your whole company. What are your feelings on this? You know, the, the, the moisture content, you know, I don't know, I just throw a number like five percent out there or above that. You know, then that's too much compaction. I mean, are you guys taking those things into consideration and realizing that these are things that are important to us out here?
Can I take this one?
Yes.
Um, two sides to it. Um, we actually started three weeks ago and will continue through the entire winter and probably longer. Um, we're going to go on every single property, take three soil samples at a minimum, there's like maybe three soil samples every five hundred foot with a minimum of one, three per property. Um, and it's going to tell us exactly where topsoil is.
Hmm.
Um, I think we're, we started down, we're in the Shenandoah area and are kind of moving up. Um, and that's going to give us enough knowledge to, to understand what each person's topsoil is. Um, so I know that you, you were talking about moisture content, but I wanted to add that we are doing that. All of that information will be handed over to the ag inspectors um that are hired by each county, so they'll have that same information that we have. Um, understanding of what the topsoil is. And then in terms of moisture content and, you know, wet conditions, um, we have the ag inspector out there, they obviously have the right to shut down work. Um, we expect my, our team's inspectors to work, you know, with the ag inspector alongside with them, where they'll, they'll go out and they'll be like, no, we shouldn't work today, we can't do this. Those are going to be conversations that happen every morning, every night, looking at forecasts. Um, but it's just going to be our inspectors, um, you know, or have, you know, built a lot of pipelines in their careers, um, a lot through the Midwest as well, as well with the ag inspectors who also have, who have that background and they're just going to have to make that educated decision together, um, which is where the ag inspectors, to protect you guys. Um, and I expect my inspectors to protect mine as well, so.
Okay. Right. Want to make sure the world is going to be amicable about that, you know, I mean, that's, that's the thing, I mean, this, this would have been a perfect year for you guys to be out doing your duty, you know, it's a dry. Should have been a great year for you, but, you know, I mean, we don't know what we're going to have and just we, we, we've heard from farmers that have had other pipelines put in, whether it was the fuel pipelines, you know, and spoke to us at supervisor events and those types of things, so we're, we're concerned about that now, you know, uh, but I you know, having had a little experience with Summit, knowing that they're an ag outfit, so I, I would assume that they'd be mutually respectful of another farmer, I mean, that's an assumption, not a knowledge of practice, you know, I mean, so I mean, these are, these are the, these are our primary concerns here, I mean, obviously we have concerns beyond that, you know, Jean alluded to some of those before and other meetings, but the uh primary concerns are, we don't want to be damaging this county and we understand, you know, the, what from the ag perspective, getting rid of the carbon and, and moving that off, you know, it's, it's still, it'd be nice to, if you could bring back a geologist sometime. Somebody that's got some, I, you know, I've asked this question over and over, what's going to happen underneath up there? I mean, I, I don't anticipate earthquakes, but you know, I don't know that anybody else does.
So this CO2 does calcify underground.
Yeah.
Um, because it'll be under that pressure, it will calcify and solidify um once it's been put underground.
Yeah.
Um, so it won't just remain as.
Expand under there.
Um, I, I mean, it will, it will expand in the same way that, you know, all the athletes take up as much space as possible. Um, but it's not, um, it'll sit under pressure um and just calcify.
Okay.
Okay, and trying to wrap this up, any other questions for Kaylee Riley or Kylie?
This is tough one.
I think you're the first person to get that right.
Well, I had it written down. Cheated. I really, any other questions in regards to? I really appreciate you guys coming, keeping us up to date on your guys' end of it. It's not as nice to have the conversation, so.
Yeah, and we'll continue to come back as long as you'll have us, just to questions along the way, more questions.
I appreciate that.
Just so everybody's aware, I'll be getting a couple of permit packets of all, like she mentioned, um, I think the plan is Monday, he's going to do a field review of all the crossings, just that, you know, just the extent of the project and look over all the roads. He can tell me it looks bad, but a lot of this is conversations we've had together, how he'd like to see the permit package, so hopefully they look okay to him and I'm sure y'all will be hearing the problem, whether they look good or not uh in the future, once they
He's done it the way he likes to see him.
That's what we're hoping.
If you do, and he likes it that way, you're already.
Yeah. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks.
Your, this is our. It just changed.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, ten thirty five item, uh resolution transferring funds from self insurance and fund to wellness fund.
Um, seven thousand dollars is what, so we have flu shots.
Flu shots.
And there'll be wellness coming up in the spring, so you're trying to anticipate those costs.
Perfect. That entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
On second.
Remove by Ty, second is by Jerry to approve the resolution, transferring funds from self insurance fund and wellness fund, the amount of seven thousand dollars to cover uh flu shots and coming then wellness screen. Just projecting. So instead of revisiting it.
If you would like to come back on part time and help, we could, right?
Any other discussion on this resolution? Here and I will proceed to vote on the resolution, there'll be a roll call vote. Eric, you still honor?
Yes.
Is that yes and that you're honor, or yes that you're voting, yes, I just got to make sure.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Jean?
Jean votes I.
Jerry?
Hi.
Ty?
Hi.
Chair votes I as well. Citizens input, before we go into closed session, imagine there's probably some questions. Mr. Tim Oliver?
I'm, yes, I'm a little concerned, I was under the impression the ordinance was going to be discussed openly, but now it's going to be a closed session. Um, I guess we were here last week and we listened to the discussion about the winters and I guess I would really like to encourage the board to continue with this more tournament and tell all of those facts that were questioned or the questions that we had from last week and answered. And um I guess I would further propose that the uh discussion on the setbacks that we're, I know there's some discussion about in. That we're, I know there's some discussion about incorporated and unincorporated. I guess my thought would be make it so that it's something that's uniform all the way through. I'm concerned that there's, from my viewpoint, that it's a loophole that, oh, well, if that doesn't fit, then we can send it to the variance board. Then again, we have a different group of individuals that are maybe making some decisions. That the landlords, I assume, would be able to be present and, and have that voice, which I think that's great. But I just think that if we're going to do something, it needs to have some teeth in it. And not just, oh, well, there's this loophole that if the pressing party that's wanting to promote this project, you know, can, can exhibit some pressure against the landlord or to make that happen. My second topic of conversation concerning the pipelines is I guess I would again like to encourage the board to continue to move forward aggressively. So that that can be um, approved in the county at whatever. Timeline that takes, if it's three consecutive meetings and so forth, but I would encourage them to hopefully have that done by December twentieth. There've been some conversations about, well, you know, our hands are tied, we can't do this, we can't do that. I think this is the county's shot at trying to do something because once. The dam breaks, then the proverbial floodwaters can hence come forward. So um. I guess I would again encourage the board that if they would uh, move to file an intervention with I U B. Prior to the December twelfth or thirteenth date that was just uh, discussed. And um, then I, I guess the, the key thing is there's. I appreciate the effort that's been done. I think at this point, something is always better than nothing. So I appreciate that, uh, you know, voices are being heard. In the conversation today, okay, where things seem to always be shifting. I potentially am going to be affected with this valve station on our avenue. Or the, those are family. I'm assuming that those are going to be the two entities that are going to be uh, pressed with that uh, decision. So. I guess knowing from my educational experience that you can set rules. If you're weak on those rules, you're going to get run over. If you stick by your rules, you can always less lighten up and go softer, if you will. But I, I guess my concern is, is that um. You know, once we get these started and, and why I'm concerned with that, as I shared before, I have five power lines on my property now. If we're going to have more wind turbines visiting with the WAPA representative of the Dennison site substation. That's reason why they're locating in that area because there are those existing transmission lines and it will be a lot less. Uh, expensive for new lines to be put in that area since they've already got a hub that they can diffuse that power wherever the hybrid goes.
Jim, I'll just, I, I was, after you were brought up, the things that you brought up, I would have to say is what you brought up last meeting, probably two meetings ago, whatever it was. That was probably, it sparked my intrigue on some things more than others. I don't know, transmission lines, it's a whole different animal than the, than the, in the wind turbine itself. And you know, comes through the I U B and it is a utility and all those things. So I mean. I think that we may have to create a separate ordinance if there's, if there's something that needs to be created, it has to have its own, basically its own foundation. And I'm the, then you know, the wind turbines is, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to catch up onto something that, that, you know, would have been nice that people would have known thirty years ago, but how do you know something you don't know, you know? And so we're trying to do an ordinance now for future purposes. And it's the same thing on the pipeline. It'd have been nice to, when they put natural gas pipelines, if they'd recognize, hey, you know, in the future, there could be potential. I mean, we need to have it to where we, we have the ability to help the farmers have more say in where these things can be, or the cities have more say in where these things can be. So it'd have been nice to have those before, but when we tried to do stuff last. When the, when they were putting, putting up, putting the project together for the southeast part of the county for the wind turbines. You know, we still had eleven hundred feet setback without what was eleven hundred or so. Right at a thousand. Anyway, eleven hundreds from the hot roadways or whatever the case may be. I don't even know if that was accurate for that, that ordinance. It was insufficient, to say the least. So we're trying to clean a few things up in our county and bring us into the modern age. You know, new things are happening that they didn't have to worry about in the sixties, seventies and eighties, you know, I mean. So we're trying to catch it up, but with the experience that we found with that turbine project is. It was going to cost us a lot of money and things were going to happen anyway if we, if we went ahead and tried to hold them to an ordinance when they'd already invested millions of dollars. In a county and already had basically the approval to do things through regulation that's already been passed down in Des Moines. And it's going to be the same way at this pipeline. You know, there's already things that have been passed down there that give them, if they've got, and, and I'm, this is my assumption. I haven't read the, the whole thing in detail and I'm not a lawyer. But they, they, I think that if they've got enough voluntary acquisition. That, that they'll have the, the right to go ahead and, and probably get the permitting for eminent domain. I, 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 so we're, we're, we're not stopping and digging in to understand all of that, but we are. In, in a phase now where we're trying to protect Crawford County and, and the assumption that that's going to happen at this point. You know, I mean, to, to look after your farms as best we can. It doesn't mean we've gave up on everything else, you know, we're watching what's happening with some of these other counties there. We're further ahead in this process. So I mean, we're, we're, we're watching all those things, you know, and I guarantee you Jean's got a, she's got a hawk flying over there, you know, watching them like a hawk, see what's going on. I mean, she's, she's very interested in that.
Doing my best, Ty.
Man, you, I know you are, but uh, I mean, we're, 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 we're trying to, to, to cover all our bases here all at once. Cause we're really playing from behind the curve here and it's sad to say as it is, you know.
Well, and then I would just comment that as well. Um, I guess. If a business is wanting to do good faith. My frustration is that this project was well underway before a lot of people that are in this room even knew what was going on. So it's kind of hard to know where you're at when you're constantly having to shoot from the hip. Well, go from a eight inch pipe, now we're going to go to a twelve inch pipe. We were going to have a pumping station. There were concerns and so forth about that. And then, oh, whoops. Now we're going to have valve stations.
I think we're probably always going to have that.
How much more is going to change? And so when you go from being able to push twelve million tons, and now we're talking eighteen million tons. Well, that changes quite a bit of the income structure. And I guess I'm thinking that if this is so critical to saving the ethanol industry in which we're already subsidizing in this state. And I'm not against ethanol. It's a great thing. But we're also going to be subsidizing the pipelines through our federal tax dollars. Because Summit has admitted that if it weren't for the Q forty-five tax credits, they would be doing something different, right? So, and I guess if, if I U B gives them the authority for eminent domain. Well, then I guess I'm kind of feeling like we're getting beat on the front end by dangling the carrot to offer the Q forty-five credits. So this is why we want to do this. And then, oh, well, if you don't like it, well, now we're going to grant eminent domain. And so now we're going to force you to be a participant in it. I'm all for landlord rights. If they want to go around my section twenty-eight, more power to them. But that's my frustration is that because you're making money for profit, you're not a public entity, not a public utility. Why am I being forced to participate in your game if I don't want to play? So I guess I appreciate that the efforts that this board is, is following. Like I said, I just want to encourage that we be aggressive to do this because um. To my knowledge, Summit still has fifteen hundred parcels that they have to get Eastman's for. Um, I don't know in relation with I U B, whether that's a, a big enough number. That they will, you know, proceed with caution or whether they're just going to. And push this thing through. There again, why three people in the state of Iowa get to choose everyone's fate? Leaves me a little troubled in that, but.
I will bring, you brought something up. I, I want to, I, I actually went to the variance board, the last meeting we had. You know, because I had some of the same concerns that you just did, you know, I mean, this is a separate board from this one that's elected. Will they do a good job? You know, you guys can go talk it. I promise you they'll listen. I, I sat and that was a, a group complied comprised of a lot of farmers and county farmers. Uh, I, I've got quite a bit of confidence in them, to be honest with you. I mean, I, I, they were very well researched. They had packets that went out to them. And it looked to me like they even researched beyond them packets a little bit. Um, some very astute people are on that board on, on, on our, all of our behalf. And so just to help you out with that, I mean, as far as a concern, I'm saying I wouldn't, I'd still go talk to them if you have to deal with that. But uh, I mean, it was a good group of people that really would, I'm pretty sure Crawford County be first in the ride, so. I, I, you brought that up, so I wanted to make sure that you understood that point too. This, this, this board is appointed some very good boards, you know, earlier boards even. Obviously, we do them every January, but uh, those boards got some pretty good people on them. So I wanted to bring that up.
So.
Federal tax credits go away, wind turbines, pipelines, all disappear.
Well, yeah, if it, if it's not something that I guess private industry is trying to make money with. Seems like this is the way we do it and fund it to the government and that way make it profitable. My concern also is going to be, you know, with the safety, I know that with the location of our healthcare facility. I'm looking at the river bottom out in my neighborhood. So if there would be a leak, say in that low spot. Emergency medical is going to have to try to go through that area. We go to the west of Crawford or west of Dennison. Howard Drive Hill is a pretty good valley. My knowledge of stuff sinks. And um, I, I know that in other presentations from the self-representatives, they promised the constituents, well, we'll provide you with electric. Medical vehicles. Well, that's fine and dandy, but there's only one manufacturer of the uh, fire trucks and so forth, and that's out of Canada. I don't think that that price is going to allow Summit to give one of those to everybody that's every county, I guess, that's going to be affected. So. I guess I'm a, I'm, I'm less than trusting. I guess I'm to that age where it sure sounds good. Boy, if it sounds good, then maybe it's not all going to be true. Because why are we making it such a great deal? And to my knowledge, the CO2 pipelines aren't. We don't have the background and we don't have the experience as you were referencing, like, you know, with the natural gas and that kind of thing. So I guess that's why I want to encourage this board. Proceed with extreme caution because those ordinances and so forth can always be amended. But I think there needs to be something that's got some teeth in it, because otherwise it is just going to be, oh, okay, Crawford County, not open deal, we're just.
Better too much than not in that sense, you said.
Right. Like I said, I can always back off, but sometimes, you know, it's like when you negotiate a price for real estate. You, the seller is going to go high and the buyer is going to go low. Usually it doesn't work the other way around. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Everybody else, Dan?
Are there any counties that say, yes, please come and, and use eminent domain on our citizens?
No. I don't know that I, I think the, the state of Iowa, I could speak for, I think it was all pretty solitary that we all sent a letter to the I U B. Requesting that eminent domain not be used as a heavy hand tactic.
Is a joint letter been sent or are these individual letters?
I think we all sent individual letters and I believe, and then I think ISAC might have sent one in on behalf of the ninety-nine counties.
And to be sure, that would have been on the half of all the ninety-nine board supervisors.
I think District Three might even, did they send one in?
Girl, I would say yes.
I think the redundancy, I think it was there already, but as far as I know, Dan.
Uh, different subject on the city center building. If anybody would want to take me over and take pictures, I'd be. More than happy to write a story about it. And if you, if, if it's acceptable under the terms of what was published. You know, if you wanted to say, contact us and you could get a tour. Certainly want to write a story.
Story never hurts, but I think it might be too late now though, by what you, uh, Terry had just read it and it's actually, you had to be there on that date. The only way it'd be now is if we wouldn't get a bid back, right?
Or we reject that bid for some reason.
Reject that bid. Start the whole process over again.
The language is such as it is that somebody asks, is the man interested? You can't show up to them there?
Well, according to the way that R and P read, it was anyone who wanted to submit a bid must be there or the representative be there on that day and time, so.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah.
Yeah. But. Yeah, I don't, I don't know how it's going to play out yet, but I appreciate the offer of a, all right.
Jean's always been the kind of the person to show people around there. Jean, would you be interested in taking, giving Dan a tour of that building?
Bet you would.
Hold on. Yes, I, not anymore. Uh, yeah, I'll be glad to. I'll be back Wednesday, uh, actually later. It'd probably work out on Friday. If that's okay with everybody, I'd hope to be glad to take him through.
Act for a tour.
Friday too. I got your number, Dan. I'll call you. How's that?
Thanks, Jean.
You're welcome.
Kempson, you know his name?
Was Jean having your number?
What was that comment?
Wanted to know if you had Kempson's number too.
I do have Kempson's number. You're all in my, you're in my favorites.
FYI, when I need somebody's number, I call Jean to get it.
And I give it to you.
You do. Okay. We have a closed session in regards to. We have.